Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Earl Harper.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which its hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the first reading, I'd just like to say we did the Pledge of Allegiance twice and three times. Well, this is true, three times. So what I would like everybody to focus on in just those words that we all said, we said it three times, but let it really speak in exactly what it means and that just, you know, that just came to my mind, I'm just going to put it out there. Okay. Roll call, please.
Rita.
Here.
Stone.
Present.
Prentner.
Here.
Basswood.
Here.
Stone.
Here.
Harris.
Present.
Stone.
First read, sir, or ladies?
The following appropriation and adjustments to the budget are hereby presented for your consideration. In the general fund, reduction in salaries of $3,191, additional in salaries of $2,644, leaving thirty-nine thousand. Insurance restoration fund, building restructures, $385,000, building restructures, $288,631. Personal property restoration, $1.5 million. Communitet bridge, safety, $11,935.72. CTD motor vehicles, $13,400. Exco operating fund, FICA, seven grand, household bedding, four grand, building liability, seven grand. Public safety data, Tycurian, nine hundred thousand five hundred, FICA, one thousand six hundred and forty-four, WAPBUC, one thousand seven hundred. Veteran donation funds, other supplies, two thousand three hundred. EPA, pro seat maintenance agreement, seventeen thousand. Geminis grant, other supplies, four grand. First read.
First up tonight is our commissioners. Commissioners, I know myself, yeah, someone here, they were here.
I'll make a motion to move the jailer $1,000 from hourly to overtime.
That was second.
Just a transfer.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Voice vote. Transfer to the voice vote. Voice vote.
Voice vote. I get roll call. Voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Superior Court.
Facility.
Joe.
I don't see Joe. Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriation for repair damage. This is the insurance refund from Travelers Insurance for the water damage at 150% strength in for the year ended eight-five thousand, 1.5 million.
Second. Call me. We have a motion with a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Fine.
Motion carries. Superior Court, three. Judge Trent.
I'll make a motion to transfer to pay for compensating and valuation from active runa to $300 in transfer from interpreter to consultant.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. President, point of order real quick.
Yes, sir.
We need to approve the additional 1.5 million in that insurance restoration fund as well separately than the first one.
And we ask the facility?
Yep, yep. You did the, you did the 385,000.
I did, my motion was for both. I can change it. I don't have a problem with that. We can do both. I'm not arguing.
Okay.
Will you do both?
Your fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public defender.
Question, are we doing drugs?
Oh, sorry.
We did drugs.
We did drugs, yeah.
That passed.
I made that motion.
Andy made the motion, I believe, I seconded.
And you seconded, and voice vote, and carry. Okay. Ready to go?
There we go.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, counsel. The appropriation for legal services is for the following reasons. The Supreme Court mandated Rule 2.6 in 2022-ish. All six courts in Porter County are doing them, multiple days a week, up to five days a week, so the defendants that are still in custody need to be assessed by PAC, and then a hearing is held again multiple, every day during the week. In 2022, we secured a grant from the Department of Corrections, which covered most of the cost of these hearings. Probation got some, PAC got some, we got some, prosecutor got some. The Department of Corrections cut the grant from Porter County in 2024. We attempted, myself, Judge Janet, Tammy O'Neil from PAC, and Melanie from probation, attempted to get the grant back in 2025, and we were attempting to get it retroactive to January 2025. Just found out maybe three, four weeks ago that VOC cut the grant entirely, Department of Corrections. And so these costs are required by law and must be covered by the PD budget. The second component is the appeals. Under this prosecutor, Herman, appeals, there are a lot more trials, which means there are a lot more appeals, which is great for law and order, but these defendants who qualify for public defenders are required to have, by the Constitution, to have the A public defender appointed to handle these appeals. So that's the other reason for the cost. So I was hoping I was going to get $60,000 in grant money, which is why I didn't ask for it last year in the budget, but this is why. And I talked to some of the council members last fall, knowing that the grant had been cut and are attempting to get it back, and so that's, that's why I'm here.
Is $90,000 enough to cover till the end of the year?
I certainly hope so. I mean, there's, there's staff members, attorneys that do appeals for me and other staff members that have been waiting since June.
Over the eight?
Yeah, but the math we've done, we can't anticipate how many appeals, but certainly if it's, if a appeal is signed in November, we can, you know, kick it until 2026. But yeah, I hope so. I think so.
And you have nowhere to move this within your budget?
We've already taken money from training and ed. We never spend all that, but we did, I had a deputy take it, the Restoration Court Judge , I thought we ordered him to go to this conference, and then same thing with drug court. So I paid for their conference fees in part, the court's budget covered part of it, but I never depleted all, so we, our last payment came from that.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to move $90,000 to 13. 13110, legal services.
Second. I have a motion and a second.
This is coming out of general fund basis?
Yes, I believe so. Any discussion? See, now it's mandated. Yeah, mandated by, let's see. Roll call, please.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita. Yes.
You have something else for us, sir?
That is it.
I thought you wanted to do a transfer, too.
I don't think I need that, but if I do, I'll come back, because I think that's what I was commenting on. We were transferring from training and ed.
Yeah.
But the auditor already ended up paying those claims, I believe.
Okay.
If there's still money in there, I'll move to training and ed.
Yeah, I got a call just before coming here, that's why.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding.
Okay.
Is it better to just do it?
Well, if you don't need it.
Well, I, yeah, I understand. I'm not going to.
We'd like to see it, see how it'll come back.
Okay.
You're here. I know, they, they called before.
They, they called just before shortly. I got up here and it was something that was an oversight, whether on their end or our end, and so when he came up, I was going to ask him, but if he doesn't need it right now.
Claire's not here, so I think he screwed up.
Okay. Good for us.
Better than that.
I bet those wheels hurt. Juvenile detention center. Allison Cox.
Hi.
Hi, Allison, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you all?
Good.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the additional for the increase needed for the supervised probation day. I already approved on 144 on the July 22nd, you know, 2,644.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second on the approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alphab.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Juvenile probation department, Director Chris Byer.
Make a motion to approve the reduction to $3,191.
I have a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Thank you.
Always love to see a reduction, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Health department.
You're not caring.
Sorry, I'm trying harder.
Make a motion to approve the $4,000, the grant for the Geminus and Autism Elopement and Safe Center program.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Want to talk about this grant real quick?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to meet? Have you got a message yet?
Yeah, there it is. Hold on, could you introduce yourself, sir, to have that, to add to this point?
Matthew Paul is the new administrator for the Porter County Health Department. Nice to meet all of you. This is.
Why does your last name sound familiar?
My wife was the administrator here, now she's the administrator, and like, no.
What was the last name?
Paul. Yes, so I'm, I'm the lesser of the Pauls.
So these are for autism elopement kids, which help to, some autistic children like
to run and like to sometimes get out of their homes, it helps keep the doors closed, it has alarms for windows and doors and that sort of thing, and then the Safe Center program.
Yeah, so I'm the Safe Center instructor. We teach kids fixed training, Safe Sitting rituals, and we teach like hindrance maneuver, stuff like that.
$4,000 for that.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Keep the grants coming.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Stone.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Veterans at the last second decided they did not want to take up the cause here, so we'll move on to develop as stormwater management director, Mike Jabo. I know he's hearing Stone. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening.
Make a motion to approve the additional for $11,000, $935 for appropriate, appropriate funds for insurance claims, reimbursement for guardrails.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
We have Form 144, $6,5,199 to $47,349, transportation engineer, a total reduction of $17,850 in salary for transportation engineer.
I don't want to make a motion to cut someone's pay or not.
Yeah.
No, it would be.
This was approved last year, came to you in the budget. We had a target salary of $95,000. We found an individual that would serve the purpose, but they're not quite at the level with their engineering degree and all that, so we offered what was the market value for where he was at this point in his career.
And he knows this?
Yes, he accepted.
Most people group this?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Rita.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Stone.
Thank you, sir. Porter County Expo Center, Lori Daly, welcome.
Thank you.
Additional $7,000 to 121 FICA. I have a question, we can do all these together? With FICA, the household bedding supply, that could be done separately?
The additional has to be done by itself, transfers can be done.
Okay, so all the additional of $7,000 to 121 FICA, $4,000 to 23300 household bedding supplies, and $7,000 to 34200 building liability and compensation coverage. Additional needed to get through the remainder of the year. Can I get a motion?
Can you explain it?
Which one?
Well, why FICA?
FICA was a mistake, though. I didn't catch.
Motion to approve seven, did you say we can do them all together or do them individually?
Additional can be done together.
Okay. Do you want to tell us about housing and bedding supplies?
Housing and bedding is the line item that we use for cleaning supplies, toilet paper, paper towels, so as everybody knows, prices have went up quite a bit, so.
I was just curious about myself on Teddy, I think you were putting people up for the night, you know?
There's the campground.
Oh, this is true. And insurance, just why not?
Yes, insurance went up quite a bit.
And does the fair take part of that front? Do they, does any of it, do they pay for any of the insurance? Do they pay a portion? Do they pay them a month?
No.
Is it nothing to do with them? Am I asking a weird question?
Does the act society take care of? Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good question.
No, that's a good question. Because it's county-owned, we cover liability on the grounds and all the buildings. They take care of the maintenance of those buildings. They do get an insurance policy for the month of July, and the commissioners in the county are held harmless. So they do have that.
Lawsuits.
Yeah. There's a lot of lawsuits, unfortunately, that come out of the fair, so they, I get notification of those, but that's, that's the extent of where it goes.
We're not doing the bull riding, right?
No, the bull riding.
I don't know what that is, but we should do that. Motion to approve all three of this.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Fine.
We have a transfer, $8,000 from 35100 power to 35200 water and sewage. Transfer needed to cover increased water and sewage costs. Move to approve. I have a motion to approve. Second. And a second. Any discussion?
Is that higher bills that ticket?
Yeah, we, and not a lot of additional consumption. It's, it's pretty scary how much it went up this year.
I hear that.
Yeah, and I even got the fair invoice, so that's going to be, I, we don't pay that, but I'm anxious to see that one.
I have a concern, though, and I'm telling you if I'm wrong. You're taking $8,000 from, like, Nisco and moving it to water and sewage? Nisco's not going down.
Our power is pretty padded, so I averaged it out over the last five years.
Oh.
Yeah, and each year, I usually leave that padded and use, if I need to compensate water or disposable, disposal, I move it from that power.
Now, with the recent increase, even though you're padded, you think you're still good?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
Because we have, our, Nisco is our gas.
Okay, so you have RMC as your electric. Okay.
Did I M C not go up for electrical?
Not as much as the Nisco.
What the heck?
Yeah, and we won't see those big Nisco bills.
Run along.
January.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, RMC draws their power from Nisco, do they not? Do they buy their power?
They do, they buy it from them.
They buy that, so.
But they, the co-op did something, and I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but it's now based on what time of day you're pulling the power, and those rates are based on the time of day. The demand charges did go up quite a bit, which the Fair Board has worked with us since it went up, so I think they'll pay the county $12,000 for that annual split cost.
Okay. I have a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Porter County Sheriff, Mr. Jeffrey Ballen. Sheriff, come on down, sir.
Sheriff.
I'm creative.
All right.
And company.
Thank you.
And Jeff.
We have a transfer, $5,000 from 11-100 Series to 11-200 hourly. Passer needed to cover the cost of new hire control that was hourly temporarily questioned, metamonitor, these need to be done separately.
No.
No. Okay. Transfer $20,000 from 11-100 salaries to 22-200 uniforms clothing. Transfer needed to cover the cost of increased pricing for uniforms. Transfer $20,000 from 11-100 from salaries to 31-300 training.
Only go through all three stretch measures.
Okay.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Form 144, $8,429 to zero. We're changing some, people run, are we not?
Yeah, we're restructuring.
Explain that.
We're restructuring.
You're restructuring?
Yeah, it makes things more flowy, but I am doing away with the major's position. We got the major transfer out, and we are going to use that money to put that major back into his final testing rank, which was last testing rank, which was a captain, and we are then moving a lieutenant over to pick up those responsibilities for fleet management, insurance, quartermaster, that kind of stuff, different administrative duties. So we're going to trilaterally transfer a lieutenant over, or we did. That left the opening on the road for lieutenant, so we're going to have a promotion, which we anticipate then having a sergeant's promotion, and then we've got some other people that are leaving the agency, and we'll be having some additional promotions in the process. So just housecleaning, housecleaning, making things run more efficiently.
So basically, you have $1,500 of saving.
Right.
Okay.
Also, it's $1,500, you did the math, it's $1,500 less?
Yes.
I'm trying to figure it out.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
We have an additional $18,000, $36,100 maintenance agreement, appropriated to cover the cost of maintenance on bomb robot.
Make a motion to approve the $18,000.
Motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I have one, sir. The, the robot, is this something that you do annually? Is this something that comes with a warranty?
No, these are, that robot, Tim, do you have, do you have any turn on that one by any chance?
Yeah, it's lost, it's, we're running out of bi-rotic on the robot to the handler. It's normally revoked, but then we didn't, any bi-rotic cables or nothing, but because it went down, lost that connection after $1,000.
Okay. Thank you. And a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Does that put it to good shape after that?
Yeah.
Better be.
Yes, sir, I'd agree. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Obedak.
Yes.
Rita.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Prentner.
Yes.
I make a motion and approve the thirteen thousand four hundred dollars.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I don't.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ova.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
We got a transfer thirty thousand from eleven, one hundred salaries to eleven, three hundred overtime. Transfer needed to cover the cost of overtime due to short staffing. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? I have a question, sir. Um, you're doing twelve hours?
No, this is.
No, this is, that's a the road, that's in the jail. Sorry, never mind. I corrected myself. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Jail Public Safety Data Tech Fund, additional one thousand two hundred twenty-four to one twenty-one hundred FICA, nineteen thousand to twelve four hundred per diem. Reason appropriation needed to cover the cost of switching patrol from EO days to paid per diem. Madam Auditor, can they both be done together? The additionals.
Are you talking about FICA and per diem?
Yeah. Okay.
I make a motion and approve the one-two-two-four and nine, and nineteen thousand five hundred.
And a motion and a second?
What is the EO days to pay per, what does it mean?
Uh, just basically, uh, time off. Switching patrol to EO days. What do you mean nineteen thousand five hundred?
Yep, so we paid the different specialties. A thousand dollars is on the one forty fours. Depending on which specialty it is, the canines obviously get quite a bit more. But the bomb guys and the plot and all of them. So we had switched most of them over last year. But there was one unit that we did not switch over, and so this was additional. We've also moved guys around, added to the team so that they weren't.
So they used to get time off when they did this, and now you're just paying them per day?
Right. Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Roll call.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ova.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Shannon.
I'm going to approve the appropriation to the law, bro, seventeen hundred bucks.
Have a motion to.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Harris. Yes.
Ova.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Andy, for this last one, for the prisoner DOC, I actually made a typo. It says to transfer from ammunition to overtime.
Yeah, I was curious about that.
Yeah, that is not correct. Uh, it is supposed to be to medical and hospital services. Karen, can I, can we change that, or do I need to do that next month because it wasn't advertised properly?
You're doing additional?
No. It's a transfer.
Transfer, can you know?
Okay, that's advertised.
And that's the medical, right?
It is medical and hospital services. It quoted three-one-four-zero.
Three-one-four-zero-zero. Make a motion to approve ten thousand from twenty-two-five-forty ammunition to three-one-four-zero-zero, whatever that is.
Second.
Whatever.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further clarification? All in favor, said signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. E-nine-one-one, Director Debbie Gunn. What do you mean that? Howdy, John.
Hello, I'm working.
We have a transfer forty thousand from one twenty-three hundred per to eleven-three hundred overtime.
Will you approve the forty thousand and fifteen thousand transfers?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the transfers. Any discussion?
Are we, we're not shorting like, uh, pro or anything like that, company issues there?
No, I have numbers if you have, if you have to let them know them, we're sound.
And you guys agree?
Yeah, with them being short on salary throughout the year, that also equates to them being short on bike and personal transport over to other places.
And this will carry over to the end of the year?
Yeah.
And where are we short staffed? Like, are you, like, you do not have enough, uh, regular dispatchers or that?
We're actually, I have those numbers. Um, we are, if you recall, last year we dropped to thirty-two. And right now we are at twenty-nine and we have three part-time. So we're actually three short, but of those twenty-nine, four of them are in training. So essentially they're, they can't function on their own. So when we have a minimum staffing on days of six on days and five on nights with vacations and, and, um, holiday time and things like that, we just have the need for other people to, to, we have to meet our mandate as minimum.
Yeah, that makes sense. Are you guys planning on going to thirty-two? Are we still trying to hire to get that number?
Yes, yes, we are absolutely.
Somebody's in training right now, because we had talked about this before.
We have four that are currently in training. Uh, actually, I'm sorry. Yes, we have four that are in training. One is coming on September eighth.
That, that was gonna be my next question. Thank you for answering that. So would somebody on September eight? How long before the other three, you know?
Um, it is phase training, so one of the four that are currently on the floor is, um, a little bit advanced. So she just finished up the first phase. Um, she's working on fire and E and S. They anticipate if everything goes smoothly, that should be another few months. Um, once you pass your second phase, you can technically be used in a position for shortages, which gives us some flexibility with that. And the final phase is PD. Once you pass that phase, you're, you're completely released. The other three, um, came off, came out of the academy about two weeks ago, so they're still in a call-taking phase. That means they're literally tethered right next to the CTO, so they're, essentially two people are working one position. And that usually, our, our, our training time for that is about eight months, you know, and all of them are new, no experience. So we're gauging probably, anticipating about eight months. Um, the person that's starting on the eighth has a few years of experience at a smaller center. So we're hoping that that will translate into kind of an expedited training for her. Um, and then we'll be, um, I, I, I'm, actually, I, you know, I've shared with some of you at the meeting that we had our, my budget meeting last month or this month earlier. And I just want to really thank the council because I know last year you did something very special for the nine-one-one center. And, um, I know that the wages and, and increased wages are kind of a point of contention at times, but I just would like to give statistics. Um, we've had one person this year, one full-time person, now the end of August leaves. It was on wonderful terms. She got married. She had life.
How could I wouldn't, man?
She, she, she had, she had life circumstances changed and she's looking at other opportunities. But, um, I attribute that to, a great deal to your consideration last year, as well as I think, you know, there is a change in culture, which that's certainly going to keep people as well. I think it's a combination. But I just want to make that, um, even with the raises, we are, we are behind where we would be with our overtime. So that's just a testament to that we're keeping people and, and we're, we're doing what needs to be done.
So with the, isn't these four people, will that bring you up to something in regards to what you see, personnel ones?
Um, well, we're, we're budgeted for thirty-two, so when we have these four, I mean, even with, considering everyone that we have hired now, we're at twenty-nine. So we're technically three people short still. Um, but once they're released, I mean, you'll significantly see the overtime drop if we don't have, knock on wood, Andy, any departures, um, I'm with you. So that will, you know, our overtime will drop, our numbers will increase, we'll have three more that we're looking to sell higher to be at, at, um, fully staffed and following right along.
Okay. Thank you.
How's the CAD administrator, all that stuff going? Are we catching up? Are we almost caught up or not? We're not in any more trouble? We are?
Well, that's an interesting, if, um, there are, I, I, I have, um, I discussed it briefly when we had our budget meeting. I am still really pushing for a full-time administrator position, um, for many reasons outside of just CAD administrator. Right now, there are some considerations that we need to look at moving forward, um, one being the ambulance committee, and I won't get into the weeds. But some changes that we're anticipating will require provisioning, re-provisioning CAD. Um, and that is significant, as I explained previously. So that's one thing. We also kind of have in the nine-one-one department, silos. Um, Rich Howard, we all are probably familiar with Rich. He is just a, he's a real go-to in this county. But he is a silo of information, and I really think that this CAD administrator position, he's got less than two years. He's, he's made it very clear he's gonna be retiring. So we need to get somebody in there who can really mirror him and learn what he's doing.
And I appreciate, but I'm talking about Mac, I'm talking about what, did this, we gave you money, did that fix the problem? Are we caught up? I get, you, the fix, the long-term fix, right?
Yeah.
But how are we now? Are you?
I, I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful that we, we have that. I mean, he's, as I said before, what he was doing was worthy of compensation.
That's right. But is he caught up?
Um, no, he's still, he's still working through some things, but that's to be expected with the amount of responsibilities that are associated with the position. I mean, and just the CAD provisioning, it's all, it's a branded system. So, um, he's working through these things. Some of them we discover as we, as we have a structure fire and we're seeing that the box cards aren't, aren't correct. And he has to go and re-provision. So, yes.
We're in better shape than we were?
Absolutely. One hundred percent. One hundred percent.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. Sorry, you ought to know not to ask questions. I'm gonna give you a long answer, Andy.
I wasn't at that budget.
Tell me, tell me, I'll fill you in.
Auditor's office. Madam Auditor, thirty-five thousand transfer from thirty-seven-two-hundred software to thirty-nine-five-hundred. Please try through. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
It's still like Dave becoming fun. That's okay.
Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Second reading.
The following adjustments to the budget have been approved here tonight by the council. General fund, salaries of reduction of three thousand one hundred ninety-one. Uh, increase in salaries of two thousand six hundred forty-four, legal services increased to ninety thousand. Insurance restoration on building, construction, prepared maintenance, here eighty-five thousand dollars, two hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-one. Personal property, the store, one million five hundred thousand. Fuel, the bridge, safety, additional eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars seventy-two cents. CCD motor vehicles, thirty thousand four hundred. Exco operating fund, FICA seven grand, household bedding four grand. Building and liability, seven grand. Public safety data tech, an additional of nineteen thousand five hundred per diem. FICA one thousand two hundred forty-four. Logbook seventeen hundred. DEA proceeds, maybe three minutes, additional seventeen thousand, debt and his grant others, plus four grand. Second reading.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Reba.
Yes.
Then.
Yes.
Brechner.
Yes.
Basswood.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Ova.
Yes.
Motion carries. Attorney's report. Harold, I believe you said you had something really unique for us here.
Well, what, it's not necessarily unique. It was, uh, just talking about some of the things that were on, uh, the, the, uh, any other matter section of the agenda. The local income tax lit, uh, entry that's on the agenda. We don't have to, I just wanted to let the council know that we do not need to vote on that. The statute requires that if there was going to be a, uh, a, a consideration of an increase to the lit, that, uh, notice be given to the local taxing units of that possibility, and that was already given. Um, it does not need to be voted on tonight. It's, it's more informational than anything else. The notice that was required by statute was already given. So that's number one. Um, two, the levy limits and tax caps section of the agenda, the any other matter, uh, portion of the agenda. Um, there, there's a, uh, statute in Indiana that requires that the council, and this has been the case for a while, uh, or since I've been, uh, representing the council. That the council, uh, at the first meeting in August, review the DLGS, um, reports that they give to, uh, that they, that they issue on the levy limits for, uh, the county and for the local, uh, taxing bodies, uh, that are also in the county. And, uh, also the, any tax caps, you know, uh, that are, the effect of the tax caps on those levy limits. And, uh, that was, uh, I believe Joy had provided that to everyone, uh, by email. Uh, and so provided everyone has reviewed those, uh, it's just a question of, uh, you know, that, that, a vote on the, um, the fact that we, the council has reviewed those, uh, and that, uh, there's two options that the statute provides. Um, after the review, we, the council can typically, um, issue a, uh, I can't remember what the statute says specifically, but, um, a written recommendation is the, is what the statute says to the local taxing units, um, after the review. And, and what's happened in the past is that the council has just prepared a written recommendation, it's pretty generic, to all the, um, uh, local municipality, townships, schools, libraries, the West Porter Fire. It says, uh, and this was included, should be included in the packet that you all have in front of you. But, um, as part of the review, the Porter County Council issued the following recommendation. The council recommends that when preparing their two thousand twenty-five budgets, taxing units should stay within the maximum levies estimated by the DLGF, and they should recognize the impacts of the funding loss, losses due to the tax cap credits. Taxing units should work to avoid property tax increases. Twenty, two thousand twenty-six, I'm sorry, thank you, Joy. Um, taxing units should work to avoid property tax increases. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Uh, taxing units should work to avoid property tax increases as the county government has done. And, um, so I just wanted everyone to be aware of that, uh, and, uh, so the council can decide whether to issue that written recommendation. Uh, the alternative would be for the auditor to submit the minutes of today's meeting to all the local taxing units. And in the past, what, uh, the practice of this council has been just to, uh, submit this, uh, prison recommendation. I wanted everyone to be aware of that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, this, this came, um, the auditor's office got it on the thirtieth or twenty-ninth of July. At the very last minute, uh, I came in, had saved my email, and we had to have it done by August first to, uh, this municipal taxing by state code, which was, uh, didn't give us a whole lot of time. And so we just went ahead and, um, wrote to everybody and let them know that by law, we had to let them know that, not that we're going to raise it, but that we're not going to raise it, but we had to let you know it was under consideration. And that's basically all that was, uh, that I'm summarizing.
The, yeah, the, uh, the levy limits were issued late, um, but the lit notice, uh, was required to be issued on or before, and I don't remember the date.
August first?
Yes, August first.
Yeah, we got the thirtieth of July.
And, uh, the, there was a question with some of the, uh, local, some of the councils, uh, the attorneys for the councils didn't feel that it was mandated to issue that notice. But to air, I, I, my opinion was is just air on the side of caution and, and issue the notice to all the, uh, local taxing units. And then the levy limits, uh, uh, that's a separate issue. Uh, the, uh, the council's review of the DLGS, um, levy limits for the upcoming year.
Do you have a motion on that, that we reviewed them?
For, not for the limit, for the levy.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I make a motions to say that the council reviewed the levy limits, is that correct?
I think that's.
And send out this.
The, the, yeah, it was correct. I'll second that, Andy.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Any other matters coming before this council? I believe we have something. Ryan?
Yes, I'm Ryan Keel from the Porter County Auditor's Office. As part of the August first meeting each year, we, the auditor's office are to, um, notify the council of the tax cap impacts and losses and revenues. So getting into that, in twenty-twenty-five, he, the county, had a three percent total cap loss, which equated to one million six hundred ninety thousand dollars. In twenty-twenty-six, we are expected to see a six percent increase to nine percent, which will equate to four million nine hundred eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars in tax cap losses. As you can see, they are broken down for all of our levy-based funds and how they will hit. You can see the comparison from twenty-five to twenty-six. On the bottom, you will see the max levy that can be applied to each one of these funds and what twenty-twenty-sixes looks like. So we will actually be bringing in less revenue in twenty-twenty-six than we did in twenty-twenty-five.
So looking at this, it's around eight hundred thousand less, the general fund, is that, I mean, approximately, is that, kind of, am I reading it right?
So we, the county, will bring in on the levy, meaning property taxes, eight hundred thousand less than we did in twenty-twenty-five this year. Now, one thing to consider, when you do this equation, you have to take the property tax cap loss. So say from the general fund, three seven, three million seven hundred fifteen thousand nine oh nine, and then subtract that from the thirty-eight million, one twenty-three, four oh two, and that's what we're actually going to collect. So we will actually only collect thirty-four million dollars next year.
And you would do the same thing for twenty-five, too?
Yes. Is there any questions? So all this information is estimated by the DLGF and is available on their county website. And we just verify and double-check that everything is accurate.
How come it's that big a difference between one point six to four nine?
SD one.
It's all related to SD one?
Every bit of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you go, any other further questions? Okay, there are enough. Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I did forget to, to mention that the statute about the levy limits does require, uh, the council to, if there's any representatives of, of any of the local taxing units that do want to comment on the, uh, levy limits and, uh, the DLGF, DLGF, um, report, that they be given that opportunity. I don't think anybody's here, but I just.
Would that include townships?
That would include townships. We, if there's anyone that wants to comment on that, uh, as it pertains to the levy limits, I want to make sure that we give them an opportunity to do that.
Do we have anyone here from the townships by chance who would like to comment on that?
We're all looking at you.
We're, yes, we're all looking at you gentlemen. Mr. Topple? Not at this time?
Well, not at this time. We're, we're still trying to figure it out. It's, uh, very confusing.
Would you like to come up there and bring your, uh, associates?
Come out.
And introduce yourself, please, while you're seated.
You might have to turn on your mic.
Breathe light. We can share and go.
Well, as, um, as you.
And you're, sir, for those who don't know you.
Okay, my name is George Topple, Union Township Trustee and Porter County N D M.
And you, sir?
Scott Gilbert, Washington Township Trustee.
Okay, thank you.
As, as I started to say, it's a very, um, uh, interesting process. And, uh, even though we had some time to look at this, we don't know what the guidance is in total and what the total impact is gonna be on the townships. We see that it's going to be, um, an issue along with the other, we have small budgets to begin with. And we have cemeteries and we have parks and we have poor relief and we have a number of fire departments that have to be funded. And with cutting in funds, it makes it even more difficult with the additional mandates for, um, meetings, requirements for AI. Uh, we are getting some help out of the state for, uh, for websites and things like that. The staff of me, myself and I, and, and Scott himself and I, makes it very difficult to do all the different things that are required. Uh, plus trying to operate. operate without a city or a town to fall on. So we're essentially having to do a number of things, and coordinating with the county sometimes is, well, not always easy to do. But I want to compliment the council and commissioners and everybody for working with us, trying to give us more information and making it possible for us to make some progress on our budgets and try to figure out where we are and where we're going with this thing. The answer is we don't have the information that we would like to have to be able to know where we stand and where we're going. And it was a little confusing on what I just said, but it is confusing.
So how would you get the, go ahead.
Isn't that, I feel like Ryan, is Ryan here?
Yep.
Ryan, in that website, that spreadsheet you shared with me where there's the drop-down boxes?
Yes.
Have you seen this spreadsheet with the drop-down boxes?
So basically, like, I have a projected up there on what we are going to lose within the county. It will also show you what you're going to lose within the townships.
Correct. And where would they find this at? Exactly how would they get to it?
It's on the DLGF website, but I can also email to them.
We've seen those, but sometimes those numbers seem to change, and we don't know, we don't know from day to day, and there's a lot of uncertainty, and that's one of the questions and concerns that we have, I believe.
Do you agree?
No, I completely agree with that. That's the first I've heard. Matter of fact, I met with DLGF Monday, and their response, they really don't know what the impact is going to be. So that's.
Even though you have estimates, we still don't know what.
Ryan, what will be that?
This, this Friday, Julie Olpoff, the state representative, is meeting with her townships, which includes Union Township, we have 3% of her district, Porter Township, and Winfield Township, to discuss the impact of Senate Merold Act 1. So we hope to have a little better handle on what we're doing and where we're going, and some possible solutions that we may be able to come up with. I know that the Indiana Township Association has been doing some research and studying. We're having a meeting in September, September 21st to the 24th, which many of us will be attending, to try to figure out where we're going in the future with suggested legislation. What that is right now, I could probably better tell you next week after having a meeting on Friday with Representative Olpoff.
Is there any, do the townships meet at any time during the year as a whole?
Yes, we have a township board, and it was three township.
I mean, that the council would be, is there any, like, a regular meeting?
Typically, every quarter, we meet the township, a couple board members, you can't totally, like, you guys as well. The township trustees live together, maybe a couple board members show up, with the tip-week Commissioner Barbara Regis, the president, and that's once a quarter. I think we need to get in November.
So basically, you're offering us an invitation to come and see if we want to?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you.
Is that during the day?
Also, there's many other things that happen, like, even by 3:00.
But in regards to the letter, I'm just curious, this letter really is just saying, stay within what the DLGF tells you to say, is that right? That's all we're doing, is telling.
It's a very generic.
We're telling them, they should already know it'd be phoned.
Essentially, and the alternative is, is the, I think the statute was, my guess is, when they drafted this statute that required it, they wanted to leave the option open so that if the council wanted to in a unique situation, maybe a unique recommendation to a particular local unit or otherwise, they could do that. But in the absence of that, they just would make a general recommendation. And in the absence of making a recommendation, the alternative provided by the statute is that the auditor just provide minutes for today's meeting to, so it's.
It just seems very generic.
It is, it is very generic.
This isn't going to help you, is what I was trying to get at.
No, that's not going to help them.
Well, we're concerned also that what is going to happen when this, when the pie is split up? Are we going to get a certified chair for the townships? We have other things that we have to worry about. We can't fix our cemetery fences in our township. We have invasive species where we need, need help with that without the support of doing it and not the money to be able to go and say, we have a 40-acre farm that has 20 acres of Canadian thistle. Well, according to the statute, we're responsible for making sure that that's enacted. We give a notice for 48 hours, and then we're supposed to take care of it. Well, we try to work with the people, but when they don't understand it, we don't have the knowledge to do something like that, or the resources to go and eradicate the problem, and then file a lien, and then wait several years and never get our money back, possibly money that we don't have. Those are, it's just one type of issue that we run into. Not to mention the fact that last year, not this year, but last Easter, someone took out the whole front end of the cemetery that we have in Weeder, of Jane Cemetery. We couldn't find the person. Person drove off, but the whole cemetery was wrecked, and it is an 18, early 1800 cemetery that has Civil War people in there, and we haven't been able to have the money to fix that. Try to enlist the Eagle Scouts to come up with a project so that we can get, save the sign, the letters from the Jane sign that was there for over 100 years anyway. So we're going to try to resurrect that, make it, you know, better. But we, we have a number of issues that people don't see about, and I'm sure that each township has their own issues, that we don't have the ability to raise funds to be able to take care of it with donations and volunteer work.
When you say invasive species, I don't know if the councils are aware, there's something called Joe Pie weed. Are you all familiar with that? Every part of that thing is poisonous, and if you grow up against it, it can make you itch really bad. Some who have a really bad reaction, you even have to go to the hospital for it. Now, Joe Pie weed grows pretty well everywhere, and a lot of our farmers, they grow corn, soybean, and so on. This is one of the big reasons why they spray their farms with these pesticides. But it's pretty nasty weed, and if you are responsible for the maintenance, and kids go out there and play in there, and come back and get sick, yeah, you can't pay some retribution from the parents, I'm pretty sure.
There are a number of invasive species that it's hard to keep up with, especially for somebody that is a train and hasn't been a farmer all their life. People come from Chicago by a 40-acre parcel of land that was a horse ranch, and they think they're raising hay, but they're raising invasive species, and that affects the farms around it, too, and it becomes very, very much of a problem. And quite frankly, we can't react fast enough on a situation like that to take care of the issue.
And the homeowner is responsible? Because the homeowners are not responsible?
Well, they're responsible, but they don't know it either. They work in Chicago, their relative is living on the property. They bought a 40-acre parcel because they thought it was cool, they live in Chicago, and they don't understand what's going on, so they try to do something else, they cut the grass along the sides, and they think they're complying with the law because they think they're raising hay.
Well, maybe this is a question for Harold. Legally, can we hold the homeowner responsible if the township has to listen and put that cost to the homeowner?
Well, yes, we can, but we have, but we have to pay for it. We don't have.
Oh, out of pocket first.
And then we have to file a lien, and you may or may not get the money back. And it could be very substantial, especially when you're talking with many acres. And then there are other issues, too. I'm just using one example. It's not one, it may be, you know, three, or four, or five, or six, and I don't know about the ones that don't get reported.
Well, thank you for the township's point of view, Duncan. Anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other matters in the country for this council, any events or anything like that?
Commissioner Bassler.
Miss ma'am.
We were contacted by SPOA with reference to our audit. As of this point in time, we are missing minutes for 31 meetings. Since 2023, we missed five. 2024, we missed 18, and so far this year, we're missing eight. 31 meetings with no mention.
HR meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, at this point in time, this week Jeremy Reeves came to the auditor's office and created a hostile environment, and proceeded to use abusive language and profanity addressing an auditor's employee. His physical actions were aggressive and created office disruption. HR has been notified, and for the safety of the auditor's office, Mr. Reeves must make an appointment, and I must be present for all future meetings.
Okay, well, that's a subject for HR, and.
And they have been contacted.
Untrue, though. The aggression was started by the auditor's office.
Well, once again, we will let you work that out and have HR involved, and we'll see what we have with that. Okay, move along. Anything else? Okay, we'll close it up for public comment. Yes, we're all looking at it. Any public comment, anyone? Wait one.
Can I just ask, this is not public comment, this is a question for Ben. Just curious, are we, these laptops, we're going to have our software on to see all the budgets, correct?
Yes, correct.
Will we be able to access that from home, or is it only when you're here? What's your?
You have to be on the Porter County domain, so it would be better if you're in Merold. We go email it to you and stuff like that, we might have to work out some easier.
Ben, is there a reason we can't let them use Duo? Is there a reason?
Just complications, maybe. It might just be a little bit tricky. I think, I think having a Dropbox might be a little bit easier for everybody, because more.
Well, I'm just saying, if they can have access for all.
I just was asking, because we all need to be on the same page, of how we're utilizing this.
Okay.
So basically, I guess you pay it from home, then, without having to come in here?
You gotta come here, Ben.
I, I.
Have to come in?
He said no. No, you can't.
I do believe that they wanted them to stay off of Duo for whatever reason, how it's kind of set up. I couldn't ask legal to get it put on Duo, so I just got on my back.
Is Duo a shared drive?
No, Duo would be.
It's not for the kids' connection.
Yeah, yeah, you're at home, you're under wifi.
You have to get a verified number on your phone, and then you have the verified number, and then you can.
Yeah, you're at home, you're under wifi, click on this thing, you'll sign in, it'll trick, it'll bring the VPN over here, so you'll be at home, but your computer, make sure it's in the building, on our internet, and then you'll have access to, you know, county drives, that sort of stuff, blah, blah, blah. So that's always, that's always possible, but it's a little bit complicated. It's not super user-friendly, but we could always make, we could always make it work. I was just thinking it might be easier for everybody to have a Dropbox or something like that, OneDrive or something like that.
I was just asking, because if there's really, I can't access it from home, that makes sense to leave it here in the council office.
You'll be able to do a lot of home, even if you don't.
And look at, like, anything that they send you an email, you'd be able to open up and look at a spreadsheet on it.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time. I'm sorry to put you on the line.
Any other public comment? Go one.
I'm glad you asked that question, because it actually was a question that I was concerned so big.
Why didn't you come up?
That would qualify for public comment.
My name is John.
We got a rule.
Hearing no further public comment? I have a motion to close out. We have a motion second.